A separate element on the living shoreline. And we will develop the project timeline, align this update with our other planning efforts, such as the build-out and transportation study, which will be coming to you at the end of this year. We will enhance the collaboration with our other city departments as we move forward. We've been talking with the engineering staff and canal maintenance. If there are areas that they would recommend for this type of design, we will incorporate their knowledge. We've talked to Gary Dishar and Kathy Miller. Both are on board with assisting in ways that they can prior to Irma. And then develop communications and marketing materials. The partners are all available if there are any questions. Go ahead.
I don't have a problem with the concept and the idea. I would like to see more information about how it's going to be funded before I approve it. I think we're talking about a lot of money here. When you look at all the numbers that were on the screen, you know, there's quite a bit of money involved here. And I would like to see how we're going to fund it before we move forward with it. The other thing I would mention is we're talking about adding mangroves and other things to the plan. And if you look at Ponce Park, there's a significant amount of mangroves that now block the view to the water. How are we going to manage that? Because it's my understanding we can't cut them.
You can maintain them, and that would be part of the permitting process. You would maintain them at a certain height. It's the roots that are going to be more beneficial at that point in certain areas. But we could require a maintenance contract be maintained at X height for them.
Can we do that at Ponce? Because you can't see the water from a great deal of the park right now.
They have approval to cut it down to a certain height. I'm not sure what the height is, but at this point, they are allowed to maintain it at whatever the height is in the permit.
Vavanti has done that. When Vavanti first went up, some of those mangroves went all the way up to actually encroaching onto the third floor. And over time, I think they're allowed to cut so much at a time, as I recall, but then over a period of time. And then they maintain their mangrove at that specific height. So you just don't take a chainsaw and chop it off a flat top. But yes, you can maintain them at appropriate heights.
And keep in mind, there will be areas that we won't put them for that reason, because you do want them to grow. You're not going to put them in every area. It's just a tool in our box that we could utilize. We wouldn't put them where they're going to cause a problem later on. I think, was that what you were going to, did you want to speak to that?
To the funding.
Okay. We have Christine Shepherd from TNC would like to refer to the funding question that you previously asked.
Hi there. We can put together a list of potential funding sources that we think we can use to implement the project, so actually put the projects in the water. Part of the reason that the need for this plan came about is that we had several opportunities to apply for pretty high magnitude funding opportunities, so several hundreds of thousands of dollars. But the projects have to be pretty much shovel-ready. So the engineering has to be done, the partners need to be on board, the communities. So we missed those opportunities over the past, you know, 18 months to two years or so. So we can put together a list of those previous funding opportunities that would have funded these types of projects, if that would be helpful.
Yes, I appreciate it.
And the key would be to having that living shoreline plan incorporated into a city's planning strategies.
Is the Regional Planning Council helping you do the update? Or who's helping you rewrite the update?
We have not gone out for bid on that yet. The scope has to be done, but we didn't finish it due to the fact that we wanted to see if we could incorporate this into it. So it will be presented to Marion by December.
And I mean, I'm in favor of it because it is a long-term, I don't know what the years would be, but it would be a long-term plan that we would have, you know, over time. Like what she was saying, what we've had already, we've been doing over time, and we've been pretty successful with what we put down on paper in 2009, I guess.
Well, that was the adaptation plan, but we've done other projects with the TNC that, you know, from 2004, I believe is that, that first coastal resiliency planning. So.
I definitely would like to see it included in this rewrite, just because then we're not having to go back and resubmit it. And the, I would like you to speak too about maintenance. Like if we do, if we do a project like your pilot project with the Four Points by Sheraton, is that now on the city to maintain? Or who's actually the owner of, I mean, I know it's submerged land, so I would need some clarity on that as well.
Yeah, I've got some other comments I'd like to make too, but when the council's done.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Matthews on some of the thoughts, because my initial thought was the 15,000, why didn't we include that in our budget as we went forward on our budget? Because that was, you know, April was, we were still in the midst of preparing budgets. But your comment that if we do add this now will save us dollars in the long run. So I think that's good. The one thing that I was concerned when I was getting ready for the council meeting was looking at this, that if we, if we agree to this, all of a sudden now we're also committing to this half a million dollars for the pilot project. And it's like, because that's the way it came across. And so, hang on, but that's the way it came across. And I had residents express concern about this themselves. So I think, you know, as we engaged in the discussion in April, we're all in favor of doing this. I think it's, you know, it speaks for itself in how it can help stabilize the seawalls and the shoreline and along the harbor, and so it's great. I was concerned, wondering about if the area around the Sheraton is a pilot project. Are we going to be able to keep the mangroves low enough so that we aren't destroying the view from the Teke, which has turned out to be this great economic engine for the Sheraton, and our community loves it. And so, you know, there's kind of a...
In that particular area, we would definitely be working with the applicant on that issue.
And then the other one is, I know that the applicant, or the Sheraton, has come to me asking for numerous things. So I'm wondering, is the, is the Sheraton willing to also give some grant dollars toward this to help make?
We are working out those. We have not received a final answer on that, but we are working with them on obtaining the funding from portions, hopefully, of there.
I know that they built the sea, they built the...
Harbor Walk.
The Harbor Walk there. And I know that, was there some problem with the Harbor Walk, I think, from the storm there? Did I hear that mentioned? I would certainly want to stabilize everything along the Harbor Walk. So if this is going to help us stabilize the Harbor Walk, it's a good thing.
I don't think the Harbor Walk disturbed, but I did see their dock, they had to close for some reason.
Was that what it was?
Yeah, it had damage.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just got a couple, one is, is being married to a very intelligent woman who writes grants. I've learned, particularly in her work recently at the Botanical Garden, the plans come before the grants. There's no chicken and egg here argument. Okay? So you have to have the plan, you have to have the passion to get that plan out there, and then the grants come. The people that don't get the grants are the people that say, oh, I've got a great idea, and then that's as far as they've gone. You've got to be pretty methodical. People want to be very careful with that. As far as the living shoreline goes, it's just a win-win for everybody around. I'm particularly interested in the fact that we want to reestablish the oyster beds, because that's a great way. Molasses are great filters. It's a great way to increase the purity of the, and water quality of the harbor. You only have to look at the Lake Erie study. Lake Erie was once a dead lake, and the mollusk brought it back as soon as you took the nutrient out of it very rapidly. That can happen here. This was a harbor that had a very robust oyster population in the past. It'll reestablish it, and it's just a win-win for everybody. We may never get to quite the blue water that we get, although you don't get it at Fort Myers at the moment. But I like to point that out. We may never quite get the blue water, but we'll get something much closer to it over the long haul. So I think that we should just go forward.
Yeah, I feel the same. I guess, what steps are needed to do what you were asking about? I guess, are we deciding now to approve it, or are we getting more numbers, or what is it we're doing now?
All we're asking you to approve today is an additional $15,000, so we can update the comprehensive plan and include a living shorelines. We are not asking you to appropriate $1 more. I'm a supporter of that.
And I think it would be a phased approach, because like they were saying, and we know this from the MPO and every other funding source, if you're not, if you don't have the shovel-ready project, you go way down on the list.
Yeah.
You know, we've even talked about, you know, in transportation, that Carmelita intersection, like maybe paying for the engineering just so we could move ourselves up in that process. So I just see this as a phased approach, but I would definitely be in favor of including the element. I mean, we were kind of on the forefront of the other side, and this is just a continuation of that. And seeing that, you know, your people are saying that this would be a model for other communities and possibly Charlotte County, I mean, look at everything that they have going over on their side. The public stuff and now the private stuff. I mean, this could really help them accomplish the goals that, you know, they have for Charlotte Harbor. I mean, it just, it just makes sense.
But that's a good point in itself, is that, I mean, you're looking at Minnesota Key and all this. If we do this right, we probably could even go to the state for certain things, actually get this done in a big way.
I would agree with that. So today, we're only approving the addition of the living shorelines element to our update. Yep?
I move for approval.
Yep.
But David had something to say.
Oh, you want to talk?
Well, you can approve it, and then I want to have some comments.
Okay.
I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion second to approve. All in favor? I opposed, carried unanimously.
All right. I'm going to ask the representatives of the partners to correct me if I'm wrong in what I say. But I actually was an attorney for what was then, what is now, the Department of Environmental Protection when the state was adopting its first mangrove protection regulations. And there was, and for a long time, a battle between maintaining the mangroves and protecting things such as upland property rights of view. And it went back and forth for many years, and local governments also were adopting various ordinances to address the same kind of situation, until finally, the legislature did a, sort of like a preemption of mangrove regulation, and they adopted a statute that provided for the opportunity to do two things. And Joan, would you put the first slide from your presentation on? Oops, sorry. Now mangroves, if left unmaintained, will grow to be similar to what's shown on the slide. And then the next picture, please. And obviously, in order to be able to address issues that you brought up, that is the opportunity to view the water body adjacent to the uplands, there's a desire to what they call hedge the mangroves, to trim to maintain view. Now, unless there's been a change in the law that I'm not familiar with, this kind of hedging can only be done if it was, if it has been historically been done even before the state statute went into effect. What the statute does allow is for the ability to cut windows of a certain size to allow for view through the canopy for single-family and residential developments. I don't believe that you can just lower the height of the mangroves today that haven't historically been trimmed to hedge like this, to provide for more of a continuous view shed other than what's provided for in the statute. And so the challenge, and this is where I'm coming from, the challenge is to try to get either a change in the regulations that would allow for this type of living shoreline, because without it, you're going to find opposition from the upland property owners if you plant mangroves that aren't presently there. And not having the ability under the statute to limit them to the height like this, that would prevent them from seeing the water. After I got my law degree, I went to the University of Miami and got an additional law degree, it's called an LLM, in ocean and coastal law. And part of that program allowed me to take classes at the University of Miami's Oceanography School. And being a biology major in college, it was very thrilling for me to be able to do that. And I took, I took classes from a professor who was an expert on mangrove biology. And we went out to Florida Bay, and one of the things that he was showing us was a subspecies of the mangroves, the red mangroves that you see, I think, here, that were called dwarf mangroves. Now, this was many, many years ago. I still had darker hair then. And so I'm asking the specialists whether they've heard anything about dwarf mangroves, which would be an ideal species for this type of shoreline use. And if not, with genetic engineering now, it might be a program you might want to be interested in, because it actually solves a problem that many of my clients in the private sector have regarding the resistance to putting mangroves along the shoreline that otherwise would block their view if they were not allowed to trim down to this height. So these are questions that need to be explored as part of the living shoreline program, so that we don't put ourselves into position like the Teke hut, where we say, yeah, go ahead and plant the mangroves, and then all of a sudden, they lose their view. And same thing with Ponce Park. You know, we may not have the ability to trim the mangroves as much as needed below, you know, from the ground up, or from, and I think that's probably where, you know, the biggest concern is, or to lower them just for view if it's not associated with a residence as provided for in the statute, so.
Two things on that, David. The first is, there is some rules and regulations about how you can reduce the height when you're pruning existing tall, okay?
That is, that is true, but it is very limited.
Right.
And that's not, and that's different, really, you know, that works if you've got the higher story condos or whatever, and hotels, yes, that's true. There's also a provision for creating a view shed, a view window.
And the windowing is a great aspect. We have it here over by the city hall, the old justice building. You can look at the windowing along the Reda roadway, looking out. It frames the harbor beautifully. If you have a chance, walk down that pathway and check it out. It's absolutely gorgeous. The other thing is, again, we are not going to be using mangroves in areas where it would create a problem. That, we realize that we want people to buy into this idea. We don't want to increase any issues with them as far as the maintenance goes.
Joan, my suggestion is not to retard what you're trying to do, but with, through the auspices of this program, which was not conceived of when the state legislature adopted their regulations, in conjunction with this program, you could come up with new amendments to that code that would facilitate and enhance the opportunity for shoreline, living shorelines like this.
Maybe there's a partnership in here with UF.
Yeah.
I mean, I suggest we may want to propose that language like right now, because we're going into session shortly. This is something you want to do. Too, this is legalistic, but if there was no pre-existing mangrove, I mean, could it be said that historically, that, because you're saying that there was an historic, you know, in terms of that, if not having it, could that not be an historic argument for not?
Yeah. The statute's very specific with respect to hedging, and it only allows you to maintain the mangrove to what you can prove has been historically hedged in the past.
Zero.
So if there was zero, then that defeats the purpose.
All right.
I would suggest that we should allow our partners to work with perhaps even Betty Stogler and Seegrant. And if there is any outcome from this, in the development of this, then we can use that at a future point in time for some kind of legislation.
This is just the beginning, you know, we'll be using the oyster reefs.
Right. And that could be part of the plan, seek relief from the state regulations that exist.
Right. Look, that's what I'm saying. Vote to approve this, but these are, these are things, I know, these are things that I want to bring to the attention that I think would be very beneficial to the city of Punta Gorda, so that we can allow for things like what's on the picture right now.
Where is that picture taken? Do you know? This one here? Yeah.
I will suggest that when we were doing the re-perimining of the marina, and we have a hedged mangrove there, that I asked the question, and we were able to satisfy the questions that, that has historically been hedged. Otherwise, you know, the places that, the new buildings around the marina would have had a difficult time seeing the water from the trees that would have been growing up.
It's an opportunity.
Yes. I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in anything, which is, which is unique for a position that I take, but I'm just offering the opportunity.
Good discussion. Went back to your college.
Yeah. I finally had a chance to make use out of that tuition I had to pay.
Thank you. So we're good, right?
Okay, thank you.
It passed. You're moving on with your living shoreline element.
And we will bring it, we will bring it back to council as we move forward.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, next, we have the Aqua. Does anybody want to take a five-minute? Okay, let's take, it's 10:18. Let's go to 10:25. We'll take a seven-minute.
Yeah, there you go. That's what it is.
I prefer Cheez-Its. I got to go back to Cheez-Its.
Hey, Jaha. Would you model some of that clothing that you just got?
Of course. Oh, the skirts? Yeah, just, you have skirts?
He made me skirts.
I bet you'll look cute.
Look, 10:27. Okay, we are back in session, two minutes late, but we're back. And next, we have the presentation by Aqua on the strategic communications plan.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. For the record, Dave DiMaggio, Aqua Marketing Communications. I'm joined today by our Vice President of Strategic Campaign Communications, Mr. Elliot Cohen. About a year ago, Aqua was selected through RFP to examine the city's brand, develop a city brand, and also look at long-term strategic communications for the city. So we're here to tell you the outcome at this point. We were here in July, giving you some sort of report on the discovery process and some preliminary research, but also develop, giving you our three-year look at the plan at that point. So we're at the conclusion, and we're here to report today the conclusion of that and to move on. So our assignment today, our agenda today, is to tell you about the, remind you of the assignment, the branding process, we'll review that, the conclusions of that process, our brand recommendation, and then we want to go over our strategic communications plan for the budget year 2018. Just a reminder, what our goal and our assignment was, was to define the brand of the city of Punta Gorda and devise a long-term strategic communications plan. And the process that we used was that first, we took an inward look, but we also had an outward look for that. Now, what this did is it provided us an understanding of really the place. What is Punta Gorda? Also of the people we'd be talking to, the people that encounter the city of Punta Gorda, encounter the brand. But also gave us a look at those things that might invite or pose an alternative choice for the city of Punta Gorda. Within that process, the brand is divulged. And also how we can proceed forward with communication. The process we used, the first step was a brand review. Is there any brand in place for the city? There was some attempt at branding earlier. There were a number of people who've done a great job and doing their best job and seeing what we could do to brand what the city was, but there was really no formal brand process that we've just come through and used over the next year, last year. There was really nothing really formally adopted by the city in such a way that we're proposing today. We also did a community attributes assessment. So this is basically Aqua staff onsite here. We visited over more than 25 areas of interest throughout the city, so we had an idea of what really is the city. Now, Aqua had some idea what Punta Gorda was. We also have the contract for county tourism. But this was great. This was an eye-opener, was a much deeper look at what the city was, and boots on the ground, and being really to see it and touch it and understand it in a way that we hadn't had before. We also looked at the promotions and communications history of the city. Now, the city in and of itself, city government really hasn't promoted the city in such a way to tourists or to potential relocators. But there are plenty of other people that have done that, are attempted to do that. So we were aware of that, whether that was a chamber, or county tourism, or ED, County EDC. So we became aware of that history. But we did see that the city itself has a very good inward communications effort, a lot of channels involved there, communicates very well to its citizens, it's just not a real external communication to others. We did look at the history of key stakeholder participation, and what we mean by this is there are people in town here who really are pretty much saying things about Punta Gorda. They need to, in order to do their business. Many of them do so actively, and so many times in coordination with the city, but they're out there defining, whether we like it or not, they're defining Punta Gorda for us. Another thing we looked at was inquiry fulfillment. What we mean by that, that when people have a desire to know about Punta Gorda, maybe they're visitors, or maybe they're considering relocating a business, or they're considering just moving here. What do they go through? What are the steps that they go through? Now, the city itself, of course, will do some of this, but it's mostly, this has been handled by others, and we were able to look at data that others have had, such as county tourism, or maybe the chamber, or local realtors, just who is asking for information, how, and how are they making those decisions? We also did stakeholder input. We, over a six-day period, we had one-on-one interviews with more than 60 key stakeholders throughout the community. Terrific insights for us. These are people that are right here in the community, have a history in the community, longtime associations with the community, so able to provide us tremendous amounts of insights. It's a very broad and diverse group of people representing residents, and business people, and others throughout the community. The other thing we were doing with that is really providing, that stakeholder input gave us really a SWOT analysis. So instead of bringing a lot of people in a room and doing a typical SWOT analysis where we kind of had the dynamics of the room, direct that SWOT analysis, this gave us really very discreet information and the ability to look at things more discreetly. Along with that, we also performed a citizen survey. So over a three-week period, we had online the same sort of questions we were asking people during our stakeholder analysis. We had over 400 citizen responses to that. We were very surprised at that, that sort of turnout. So we had a lot of good input from the citizens along the same lines of questioning. We also looked at past target research, and what we mean by that is what information do we have about people that have come to Punta Gorda, and what sort of, how did they make those decisions? Now, again, the city itself had never done this before, but there's others that had had some data, whether it was county tourism, the EDC, the chamber, realtor groups, they did have some data, some of them had actual research. So we were able to get some idea of how, who was coming from where, when, for what reason. The other thing we did was an alternative review and analysis. What we mean by that, we looked at communities that were somewhat, seemed to be somewhat similar to Punta Gorda. That came through this process that you see so far enumerated. Through this process, we were able to hear from people, particularly key stakeholders, that had made a decision to be here. What cities had they also considered, or what cities they see very similar to Punta Gorda? This gives us tremendous insight as to how people actually view Punta Gorda, and what is Punta Gorda. And the other thing we did is we looked at target history and the relocation patterns. Where are people coming from? When did they do that? How did they make the decision to relocate to the area? And the other thing we did at this point was formal research. We basically put together a panel of people who'd been relocated to the area, either as residents or business people for the last five to 10 years, and really drew insights from them, asked formal questioning as to how they made those decisions, and what other things that they decided, what other communities they look at, how did they make the decision? And how did they view Punta Gorda today? After that, we were able to actually come up with some brand conclusions. What do we think the brand could be for the city? And what sort of communications needs might we have? And then we were able to test that. So here's some of the things that were discovered through that process. Punta Gorda is extraordinarily unique. I think you all know that. It's a very unique sociology. Government communication, as I said, is focused internally, so moving forward, we want to look at an external communication. Really, there was no brand in place, but that gave us an opportunity to really define it from scratch. Others had been defining what Punta Gorda is. Some of those key stakeholders and others really are out there with a good amount of money and a good amount of effort to be able to say what they see, think Punta Gorda is, which is a real opportunity for the city. The city now can basically join that conversation, if not define that conversation, and really can kind of control its own destiny and say who and what it is. The city's growth and economy was very, very much driven by visitation. So people typically found the city because they had visited for one reason or another. So visitation, very, very important. So when we talked about, talk about external communication, or who our key stakeholders are, it's very important that we understand that concept. There is a potential appears for a generational relocation gap. And what we mean by the people that have relocated to the city, there has been a traditional pattern, they have a certain age. But what we're seeing is, as the population changes across the country, there could be a relocation gap. It's just a matter of generational shifts. And maybe, we right now are still getting a number of people that are choosing Punta Gorda, but if you look at demographics, there could be a gap, okay? Which means that we, if we're going to preserve what Punta Gorda is, we're probably going to have to fight for every relocation, every new business, every resident we have. The other thing that we found out, so people that, people want what attracted them to Punta Gorda, they want it preserved, okay? We love Punta Gorda, and we want to preserve it, and we want, we want what attracted us. And so that's very important as we move forward. And so that's very important as we move forward. We know how to communicate who and what we are, but to what other people have been attracted to. The other thing that came up was this idea of a reasonable, appropriate growth. Found out change, people realize change is going to happen, growth is going to happen, and that's acceptable, but it's acceptable if it's appropriate. So we were able to find that the real consensus there on the growth issue was the appropriateness, and that's where we have to find consensus moving forward. So it's not so much that we don't want to grow, we don't want to change at all, we realize we're going to have to have some growth to maintain what and preserve what we have, but it's just by a matter of finding our consensus. Now, when it gets to actual brand considerations, water is very central to the city and its attraction. A lot of people may even made the decision because of its proximity to the water. The harbor is much more than just a body of water. It's very central to recreation and all sorts of things, but really the concept of what the harbor is and what it means to the community is very important. We found out that Punta Gorda is much more of a community than a town. A lot of people love the interrelational, the relationships they have here, it's very interrelated, there's a lot of groups, it's much more of a neighborhood. They described it to us as very Mayberry, very Americana, very much an enclave, and it's very real. And we also don't want to forget, it's Florida. So when we design a brand, we don't want to lose sight of that. So when people are deciding they're going to relocate here for either residential relocation or business relocation, being in Florida is your first tick on the list. Now, the conclusions that we made through this process before we defined the brand and then went back and tested that through research is, again, there wasn't a brand in place. The similar cities that we looked at did have some brand elements in place, and we looked at how they define themselves. We want to make sure that we are aware of this in which we define our own brand, because we want to be able sure that we can compete and also be seen as very distinctive from those other cities. We need to be very aware of adjacent cities, and there's different reasons for this. Now Fort Myers, as we go through our process, has also been going through the same process. We haven't heard the conclusions as of yet. But as you know, Babcock Ranch is quickly coming out of the ground, and Northport itself rebranded a few years ago. We have to be aware of what they're doing, what they're saying, and their goals. Both of those cities, actually all three of those cities have made an attempt to look at that generational gap. They're very, very conscious of generational growth and the fact that they're going to have to reach millennials if they're going to stay, really survive. But we also want to be aware of how they brand, because what we want to do is come up with a brand that's unique and very separate and can compete with those adjacent cities in particular. The other thing we need to consider is how the discovery respondents described those similar cities. So they described them as small and intimate and charming with walkable downtowns, they had a shopping and dining district, they described that these cities had proximity to water, they were historic and somewhat preserved, and they were in Florida. Important for us to note this, because as they described those as similar cities, this is a way that they're describing Punta Gorda as well. But specifically how they described Punta Gorda, as intimate and connected and relaxed and safe and historic and very much a small town and not a city, it feels more like a neighborhood. And it's not just a town, it's a community. The fact that harborside came up so much, and the harbor itself, and a hometown feeling. I think that hometown feeling resonated very well with people. A lot of people we talked to said that, you know, they'd made the decision, they'd come from a place that was hometown, and they came here and were surprised that now they felt that this was their hometown. I think the concept of hometown resonated with a sense of community and neighborliness as well. Along with that, that sort of mid-American values, the fact that it's an enclave, it's surrounded by water, very affordable waterfront, some of the most affordable waterfront in Florida, great lifestyle, and again, more of a community than a city. The other thing we had to consider was the branding of area partners. Now, why this is important is we have to study how they are expressing themselves, how are they putting themselves out there. In many ways, we want to be sure that we work cooperatively with these folks going forward, and we don't want to create a brand that's going to be in stark contrast to them. We also had to consider the conclusions of discovery and that appropriate growth that we talked to as well, talked about as well. We also know this got to resonate with all our targets, and the main targets we're looking at is potential existing residents, potential existing businesses that could come to the city, and also visitors during that consideration of visiting the city and also during your experience here. So here's our brand recommendation. We're going to explain it to you as far as a positioning statement, a brand description, and a brand promise, and then key words and phrases. So the positioning statement is how do we position you vis-à-vis other cities? How are you different? This is something very written. It's really not for the public, but it's an internal look. So this is how we position Punta Gorda. Punta Gorda is the one Florida municipality that offers the best of American small-town attributes and one may be the state's most picturesque, enjoyable, and accessible waterfront destination. If you look at that, that's not Orlando, that's not Miami, it's not even Fort Lauderdale, it's not Fort Myers, excuse me, it's not Babcock Ranch. So good positioning within the state as to who and what we are. Now the brand description, let me just stop quickly, because when you talk about branding, this is where the rubber hits the road. You want to know what your brand is, this is how we are articulating it. Punta Gorda is one of Florida's most relaxed, peaceful communities. With an historic ambiance and intimate feeling, it's a small town that seems more like a neighborhood. And with a citizenry that's connected, involved, and concerned for their town and each other, it's more than a town, it's a true community. It's what so many of its residents have spent a lifetime seeking, and now have found in a place that's truly a harbor, offering safety, comfort, and a place to set forth on more of life's great adventures. Now, the promise of all that, what are we promising through the brand is described as this. Punta Gorda promises what so many people are looking for in Florida, a laid-back community where residents know one another, engage with one another, enjoy life together in what may be Florida's most relaxed tropical harborside destination. Now, there's some core elements in brand personality, and as we go to communicate through our communications plan, we want to make sure that we understand the core, the personality. We're saying that Punta Gorda, the brand itself, it's, Punta Gorda is warm and friendly and secure and relaxed, while reflecting a sense of security and community and middle American values. It does give, we do have words that really create a language for us that really reflect that, so you'll see these words in our communication moving forward. Other things we want to consider too, when we devise a brand, is the brand palette. Many times, what are our colors? Again, looking at our adjacent communities, we have to be somewhat different. And also looking at our area partners, we probably want to work together with them. So the following brand palette is what has been developed and what we took to testing through our research. You'll see in many ways it reflects the sun, and the sky, and the water, and the land, things that are so much a part of Punta Gorda in defining what it is. Then we took this to conclusions testing, and again, more research, so research on top of research on top of research. What we did, and we had respondents, composite residents, business owners, and now key city staff. So a large group of people that knew the city, had made a decision to be in the city. Key city staff were involved because at some point they were going to have to represent the brand and adopt it. So their input became very important to us at this point. We did present that position statement, the brand, the brand promise, but we also presented a variety of potential taglines and logos for them to consider that were developed. We did find ample support for the recommended brand, which was a good thing. Also, they did indicate to us which logo and tagline may best serve the purposes of the city's branding and communication moving forward. And the summary tagline out of many that were developed and presented to these groups was this, this is the one that they preferred, Florida's harborside hometown, okay? Again, Florida's in there, harbor, the concept of harbor and hometown being that aspect that so many people have found here, the sense of community, the sense of neighborhood. Now the logo, out of all the logos developed, this was the winner. You see here, very casual, warm approach, harbor, sunset, you see the land there, the designer would want to point out, the land there is a fat point, Punta Gorda, so that's what that is. The typeface that you see there, actually, through research, the groups, this wasn't the original typeface that was associated with the logo, but the groups of research said that typeface works really well, we'd like to see that with that logo, so that's what you see today. Now, it is our recommendation today, then, as a result of the extensive process that have been through over the last year, the significant amount of research, the stakeholder and citizens input, as well as the analysis and the various cofactors that we've discussed, it's recommended that the city does adopt the new brand, and use the logo and tagline, and begin the process of strategic communications utilizing the brand elements. It's one thing, however, to have a brand, but when you start to get into things like strategic communications, now you're doing the process of branding, okay? So you can have a brand, you can put it on the shelf and ignore it and never have it, but you start using it in your communications, and that's where branding comes in. And to talk about our strategic communications plan for 2018 is Elliott Cohen.
Good morning. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, good morning. I am Elliott Cohen with Aqua Marketing Communications. As Dave mentioned, obviously, we are going to transition in 2018 from brand to branding, which essentially is the implementation of what we have put together. We've presented and put together a branding guide, which is a starting point. The branding guide will be the guidelines for what to do with what it is we've been talking about, how to best use it to implement throughout the city in both internal and external communications, and obviously, it centers on the brand that we've come up with. As a reminder, the whole process that we are undergoing here today is rooted in your strategic plan. The strategic plan calls for two things, specifically identify the city's brand and market, its lifestyle and infrastructure qualities with the assistance of many partners. And the strategic plan also calls for develop a cost-effective strategic communications and marketing plan for the city. The communications plan objectives that will be implemented in 2018. The first objective is reclaim the leadership role in defining the city through coordinated communications efforts. This refers back to what Dave was talking about, how the city for the upcoming year will really start defining itself, talking about itself, using the branding, the logo, and the tagline to really shape the public perception of itself. Provide tools for city leadership and key community stakeholders to adopt and promote city messaging and branding. This doesn't work unless it is embraced and adopted by key community stakeholders, members of the community that look at this, because they are truly the ones that communicate. Obviously, communication emanates from the dais, it emanates from City Hall, but really, if you're going to successfully brand a city, it's got to be adopted by the public at large, and they really have to love it and promote it as well. Educate both city leadership and key community stakeholders regarding city messaging and branding. When the public talks about the branding of Punta Gorda, they need to know what they're talking about. They need to understand the mission statement, they need to understand the positioning statement, they need to understand the thinking behind it, so they can articulate it not only in what it is they're presented with the logo, but in anything that they're going to use to represent the city. It needs to represent a consistent look and feel of what the city is all about. Centralize city communications to ensure consistent consistency, quality control, and message discipline. This will also be a goal for the upcoming communications plan in year one. This deals with taking a comprehensive look at how the city itself communicates and creating new policies and new procedures to change the way the city communicates to, for quality control and message discipline. And finally, develop a consensus to support an economic development strategy focused on an appropriate future growth. That refers back to that appropriate growth consensus that was, that came out of the research that was done. So the strategic communications plan is a three-year plan. It has specific goals for all three years. Year one, the goal is focus on the development of essential tools to effectively promote the city's attributes and consistently communicate its messaging. When we move into year two, it's going to be the implementation. Use tools to implement tactics to create a multi-phase, highly visible campaign to promote the city of Punta Gorda to several target groups. And year three, incorporate longer-term measures such as capital projects to further promote brand and encourage perpetual ongoing awareness. So that is the three-year plan. Where we are today in the process, just as a reminder, the plan was presented to council back in July. We are now at the beginning stages of the year one implementation, where specific tactics and actions will take place. So what is the goal for year one? What will be driving the plan for the next 12 months? The goal is to develop strategies and tactics to encourage community support for an appropriate growth approach to future development, the adoption of new city vision, messaging, and branding, and the implementation of changes to the city's communications protocols to improve message and brand discipline. That is what will be driving us for the next 12 months. There is a 12-month plan that has been put together. As you can see, it is spread out into many phases. We're not going to, we're just going to touch the surface of them, obviously, here today. There are some actions that are planned to take place immediately. These are the priorities that we are going to start implementing as soon as we get the go-ahead and as soon as it gets the approval. One of the first immediate actions is the planning and facilitation of city council workshops for discussion on brand execution and messaging. This is with your approval, this is if a direction you want to go in. It would be an opportunity to present a different forum for members of council to discuss where you want the city to go and how you want this process to look and how you want it to look forward. So should it be the pleasure of the council, that's the first step to implement. Begin review of city internal department opportunities to apply the branding and visioning. This is going to be the immediate start of taking a look at how the city currently communicates, where can we start immediately implementing the brand? What is the low-hanging fruit where we can really get in there and start getting a foothold in getting the new brand out to the public in various forms? Begin a review of the city's social media, website, electronic communications to reflect brand and vision. Again, same concept, this is focusing on the electronic communications of the city. And then another immediate step is going out to the public, putting together VIP branding and visioning briefings. We want to make sure that city staff, the VCB, business leaders, Team Punta Gorda, the economic development partners that you have and others, to make sure that they have a clear understanding as to what the brand positioning is, what Punta Gorda is, what the research has led us to, and what it is we're going to be doing over the next 12 months. Other immediate actions, as you're aware, you are in the process of hiring, seeking and hiring a communications manager. Aqua will be assisting however the city deems appropriate with identification and recruitment of the new communications manager, should it be desired. We will work with the new communications manager on implementation of the new branding to make sure that whoever is hired understands the thinking, the feeling behind what we've gone through for the last 12 months or so, and has a clear vision as to how to implement it. And consult on the creation of new citywide communications procedures, basically taking a look, as we mentioned, the overall way the city communicates and putting together new procedures for that as well. Longer term, for the next, for the 12 months, drafting of branding talking points collateral. This is not only for members of the city, members of the council, but this is for the public at large. When someone asks you, what is Punta Gorda? We want to make sure that there is a consistent answer to that. We want to make sure that people have the tools to have a consistent answer that matches what it is we're doing. Creation of branding orientation materials, not only talking about the city, but obviously we want to provide members of the public, provide you, provide city staff with tools that they can provide upon inquiry to whoever wants it. Again, making sure that there's a consistent vision of the city. Assist with orientation and working with the manager, the communications manager and city leadership on the new communications procedures. Formation of a blue-ribbon panel on responsible planned growth. We talked about the appropriate growth consensus that came out of the research. We are going to explore that, and we're going to have a conversation with key stakeholders in the community and eventually the community at large about what appropriate growth means and the best ways to move forward with that. Set up, organize, and present growth and development briefings to key partners, key stakeholders, Team Punta Gorda, the business community. Same concept that we're going to implement now with regard to the branding, we want to also make sure that the community is part of the process, that they have an understanding that key members that have been part of this conversation in this city for many years, we want to make sure that they continue to be a part of that conversation. And the creation and maintenance of new externally-focused city social media channels. This is sort of getting down the road of the 12 months, but David mentioned that the city does a very good job of communicating internally to constituents, to people that are here. We're going to explore new channels, new opportunities for the city to take those communications and point them externally to people that are not currently here in the city. And finally, redesign of existing city printed materials, banners, vehicles, and other public materials to reflect the new branding standards. So again, that will be year one, that is what we're starting now, the next 12 months. The goals for year two and three, the goal for the second year is create and execute a multi-phase, highly visible campaign designed to attract attention to and effectively disseminate the city of Punta Gorda's unified and coordinated messaging, thus creating widespread excitement about the city, leading to tangible economic results. And that's really the crux of what year two is about. It's working towards those economic results, it's business attraction, it's visitation, it's taking the year one results, it's taking the messaging and making sure everyone's on board, and now pointing everyone in the right direction to make sure that we get something out of it as far as an economic development is concerned. And then year three, encourage the perpetual ongoing awareness and embracing of the city's messaging, visioning, and branding. Obviously, it's a three-year plan, you're not just going to have a three-year identity for the city, this is going to go on for a long time, so we want to make sure that we put tools in place that make sure that the branding and the vision and the concept of what we're doing here lasts for quite a long time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're open to questions?
Howard.
So as we discuss this, we're asking for two decisions today. And that is to adopt the Aqua recommended brand, Florida's harborside hometown and logo, and to move forward with year one of the communications plan. So that's the direct recommendation coming from this. We are in the process of accepting communications manager positions, there's a lot of them, we're reviewing the applications, and we will be going forward with that interview process November, December.
I want to thank Aqua, you know, you've gone through this with the county and now the city, and it's a very thorough, thorough job that you've done with the research and everything, and you've really come up with a good product, knowing that this is, you know, more of an external deal for the city, which is a new, a new concept for us, really, and a needed, I think it's definitely needed, and this is the right time, and I want to commend you on the job that you've done.
I can say on a tangible level, this is something that is needed. I'm in discussion with several people about doing residential and commercial development downtown and just not having ready materials, something that can clearly articulate who we are and in what we're doing. This is just a needed piece, because we literally have to put stuff together. Plus, on the same note, we have the fastest-growing airport in America, but we don't actually see enough of the results in the community. And this is one of those things, this is one of these bridges that can help us, you know, because right now, we're pretty much pouring water on the ground, and we need to be able to articulate that this growth in our south and eastern parts of the city that we are able to do it. And I think this is just a very, very important piece of articulating who we are, and also when people come here, how they need to fit into our world, and really not be obtrusive, but how to like compliment and, you know, really make Punta Gorda a better place.
Yes, I commend Aqua for really helping us move forward. There are those of us that have been involved, engaged in this process for a long time, and so some of the research is very edifying to us, and it's great. And I know I may have my own particular thoughts on things, but I'm just one person, and so the research bears things out. And I struggle with the word hometown. I like, I mean, I get it, but I struggle with the word hometown. And when I heard Dave mention PG is extraordinary, extraordinarily unique, and I wonder how our catchphrase really portrays that. And I've struggled with it since, you know, you gave us a council presentation, and I've kind of been trying to absorb it, because I don't feel like, you know, it's my say. But I've just struggled with the word hometown, and I call it Mayberry myself. Is that the, is that going to attract, you know? I just, the word hometown, I think if we're special, then what word, you know, would, I like the word Florida's and harborside, it's the word hometown, is, you know, is that unique enough? So it's just a question. I've had some other people react to it and kind of go, huh? And they thought it felt stale, and it felt kind of left them kind of off. And so it didn't catch them, so I need to at least communicate that, and, because I'm only one of five, and I'm just not, I wasn't part of the research at all, so it's, I'm very accepting of the research, I just have to ask it.
Gary?
In that regard, we're obviously not hometown Orlando, Florida, or Kissimmee at Disney World or something of that sort. But two things that came out of all this that resonate with me, one is that our demographics and the long-term inability to really attract the millennia generation in the future, and here we are sitting between two major communities that that's what their focus is, whether it's Northport, or whether it's Babcock Ranch, or even Fort Myers, we're sitting right there. And to Nancy's point, but just to put it in perspective, Babcock Ranch to me does market itself as a hometown to the millennia, not to the baby boomers, which is really what our demographic is becoming. That's our Achilles' heel, perhaps, if you want 20 years down the road when we're gone. So I think that, you know, we want to be a hometown to the millennia as well as my generation, and how to create that, that's what your Bailey wig is, that's not what my expertise is, but I understand and I get where you're going on it. Also, we're talking about a three-year program here, and at the end of the three years, as it was pointed out by Elliot, that we have to keep going after that. And I use the metaphor, the difference between a Ferrari and a train. We can throw a whole lot of stuff at it right now and get some short-term results, but we can stop just as quickly. On the other hand, if we go to year four, if we're already thinking about what's going to, year four, year five, year six, in other words, that train, year three, we're just getting the train out of the station, folks, okay? And then, if you look at a train, it doesn't stop in 87 feet, okay? So when hard times occur, it gets to coast through them and then gets to pick its momentum back up. Once you get the train moving, it's very hard to stop. And so we have to keep that in perspective. If we're going to make this commitment, which I believe we should, it has to be a commitment that we're not looking for the ROI on year one or year two, maybe we're going to see some progress in year three, but we have to be forward in how to appropriately evolve our community. When we talk about appropriate growth, I'm going to use the word evolve, because it's going to change, because we're going to change, and then our kids are going to be changing. How do we make it attractive so that 50 years from now, people look back at what we're talking about and what our predecessors have talked about and say, how lucky we are? I think that's the legacy that we want to try to work towards, so.
I think the words, you know, even when we had the committee, the words, nobody's ever going to 100% agree on the words. But being a hometown girl, it appealed to me, you know? I mean, this is my hometown, and it didn't bother me at all, you know? I think what they tried to do and which was accepted is put that community feel that, you know, the word community kept coming up a lot, and that's really what the words portray. So I, you know, even when we, what was your group? Sorry, I'm drawing a blank.
One community, one message.
Yeah, OCOM. When you guys had OCOM, I know it ended up the best of, but there were so many ideas that floated out there, and they were, they were good ideas, it's just that one ended up sticking. And I feel like through the research, you know, this is what really came, bubbled up to the top. And I, I mean, I, the harborside, I think it really does, in three words, describe us, so I'm okay with it. Lynn and then JaHa?
I agree, and in fact, hometown is one of the words that I used numerous times when I met with Aqua, and thank you for pulling all of the information together. I would also say that I think it's really important we emphasize the harborside part of it, because we are a boating community. Right now, I'm working with Team Punta Gorda and with the Boaters Alliance for putting together a master plan for the boating community, and this will be extremely important going forward if we're going to work together as a partnership with these groups that we develop Punta Gorda as a premier boating destination, and that's the idea that they're trying to portray. In fact, we're going to have, I was going to talk about it later, but this is a good time to bring it up, we're having a strategic planning meeting, which everyone in the community will be invited to, basically, which will be at the Lashley Community Room on November 16th. And we'll be involving people from all the different organizations in the community that are boating-related, but anybody's welcome to attend. And we're going to have breakout sessions, we're going to have brainstorming and talk about some thoughts and plans that we want to use moving forward, and then prioritize how all that's going to work together and put an action plan in place that will help the city move forward. So this can all go hand-in-hand with the branding of the city at the same time.
I think this brand, the hometown aspect, I think, is the very thing that will attract millennium, because there's just a trend now with millennials, there's a small-town cool thing, and I think that with, we do our external communications properly, I think this is precisely a way to both maintain, you know, our current demographic, attract them, but also it is attractive to younger professionals, this moving to, you know, basically a hip, small town. And I think that this is pretty much what we're saying, we're a hip, small city that's on the waterfront and has amenities, but it also has a place where you'd want to actually raise a child. And I think that also gives, that's in the situation as well. I'm fully in support of it.
I think the harborside too is just the next, you know, we got stuck on waterfront. But harborside really does like describe, like, oh, people say, oh-